Where we come from, where this twenty twenty four thirty three thirty.
Lauren Nocosa. Here. Rich Gowski. Eileen Hogan.
Yeah.
Sweetie Owen. Sean Murphy.
Here.
Ray Mass.
Yeah.
Sharon Lee.
Here.
Don Rothwell.
And.
Robert Kricker. And Vincent Light.
Here.
And for those of you who posted your whole first and well, yes, report press. We begin before they may have been the services. Describe the changes of the one that part of the property is transferred. Need to follow the deliberation of testimony heard this far in conference room on the first floor. Publicly fight to attend or have a discussion between board members and republics not at that time. And in case of the agreement. The zoning board has maintained a policy of non-during proceeding and has been offered seating and character which the next. So we have a bunch of legions.
I'd like to look at what you're interested in.
The United States of America.
To the public, which stands on nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
So we have some administrative matters. We have meeting minutes for May fifth. I think we're going to take a vote on holding. Uh, May fifth, September first, September fifteenth in twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, we have January fifth, January nineteenth, and February sixth. Just someone who does. Paul Baker.
All right.
You have a resolution of approval for thirty two Norton Bridge Avenue.
Madam Chair, that was a resolution from uh, quite some time ago. That was when Morris played for us. Uh, foreign condition and it was pretty um straightforward and uh, residue been submitted and no um usual conditions standard.
Okay, so one more.
We can approve second.
Thank you. Hold on.
Lauren Nocosa?
Yes.
And sorry. Eileen Hogan?
Yes.
Tom Murphy?
Yes.
Ray Mass?
Yeah.
Sharon Lee?
Yes.
And uh, Vincent Lee?
Yes.
Resolution appointment for conflict engineer. How the resolution. Conflict engineer base. So it's. Move that.
I'll move that.
Thank you.
Oh, Paul.
Lauren Nocosa?
Yes.
And Tori?
Yes.
Eileen Hogan?
Yes.
Tom Murphy?
Yes.
Ray Mass?
Yes.
Sharon Lee?
Yes.
Vincent Lee?
Yes.
Resolution of an extension one thirty five.
Madam Chair, that was just now, we uh previously approved that application um authorized in the charter school to utilize a portion of the property of the gymnasium. And there were some timeframes in there. Frames have expired, so they're looking to extend the approvals and if this is acceptable, we as a board for good cause having been shown um extend the force head approvals to April twentieth, two thousand twenty five and uh. That being the timeframe within which Shauna they need to obtain building permits. And uh importantly, the resolution will say all other terms and conditions of the underlying resolution of condition of conditional approval unless specifically modified shall remain in full force and effect. So that's for an extension and if that's acceptable to the board, we we can move forward with that.
Okay, so one move that.
I won't, I'll move that.
I second, second, thank you. Oh, Paul.
Lauren Nocosa?
Yes.
And Tori?
Yes.
Eileen Hogan?
Yes.
Uh, Sean Murphy?
Yes.
Ray Mass?
Yes.
Sharon Lee? Vincent Light?
Yes.
We also have another resolution of extension for.
For that is Phoenix of Madawan and um actually I just, this all just sort of came up this uh last couple of days, so. Uh, we recall that Phoenix of Madawan received approval uh in about two thousand nineteen uh for the forty two Mama Street property and they received approval with site plan approval, use variance approval, floor ratio variance approval. To um uh the separation of the ground floor retail space. And cons- second story. Two bedroom units. And that resolution was approved and it had a timeframe in there within which the applicant was to have secured uh building uh permits. Those that timeframe has expired or is about to expire expire. So they've asked for a retroactive extension and for good cause having been shown, if you all are okay with this, you could extend the approval date until April twentieth of two thousand twenty five. Again, that being the date by which building uh permits need to be secured. And again, uh the resolution will say all other terms, conditions of the underlying resolution of conditional approval unless modified herein shall remain in full force and effect. So everything else stays the same if that's acceptable to the board.
Motion approved.
Second.
Nocosa?
Yes.
And Tori?
Yes.
Eileen Hogan?
Yes.
Yes.
Ray Mass?
Yeah.
Sharon Lee?
Yes.
Vincent Light?
Yes.
Unless resolution is. As our acting secretary.
So Madam Chair, if I may, um thank you, uh Chrisanne, our uh board secretary has uh has moved on and we wish her good luck. Uh but in terms of that, there's a couple of things that you and case law and our ordinance say have to be done by the board secretary. For instance, signing resolutions, signing plans, um accepting service, signing uh subdivision deeds. So uh just in case anyone were to ask a question, we always like to be sort of thorough and on top of things. So if this is acceptable to the board, we could have, whereas in light of the current vacancy in the position of the Red Bank zoning board secretary. If acceptable to someone on the board, we can make a motion to authorize Shawna Ebanks to serve as the acting administrative board secretary, authorizing Shawna. Ebanks to sign documents and perform other ministerial board secretary duties. Respectfully, such an administrative appointment will not impact or change or affect the salary, tenure, compensation benefits or longevity of Shawna. Ebanks rather than within administrative appointment will merely authorize Shawna to sign appropriate documents, plans, deeds and resolution and other authorized materials and to perform other administrative functions. So as to minimize any disruption to the overall efficient operations of the office of the zoning board and this can be subject to uh borough confirmation. And if we have a motion to that, and second and second and in anticipation of that, on behalf of you and the board, we thank Shawna because she does an excellent job and she wears many, many hats.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
And I'll second and Shawna, if I could give you a month of pay, I would. My hands are tied.
And Lauren Nocosa?
Yes.
And Tori?
Yes.
Eileen Hogan?
Yes.
Tom Murphy?
Yes.
Ray Mass?
Yes.
Sharon Lee?
Yes.
And Vincent Light?
Yes.
Well, we have one application that will not be here tonight, one eighty seven Riverside Avenue, which is the. Out front, out front billboard that will be carried to Bay eighteen. Everybody here on that application, it's Bay eighteen.
And Madam Chair, if I may, just for the record, um there's no further notice required for that and Shawna, I believe Jennifer Crimco on behalf of the applicant did in fact provide uh consent to extend the timeframe within which the board has that.
Yes.
And I felt bad because market um Lexine just came for that uh to watch him. I should have called him earlier, so. But uh we can just have a motion to carry that.
Okay.
Okay, motion occurred, second.
Oh, Paul.
Lauren Nocosa?
Yes.
And Tori?
Yes.
Eileen Hogan?
Yes.
Tom Murphy?
Yes.
Ray Mass?
Yeah.
Sharon Lee?
Yes.
And Vincent Lee?
Yes.
Okay, so we have Harding Road, that's the place street coming up. Excuse me, myself and Ray Mass as well.
Okay, uh Mr. Mass, uh thank you, Lauren, and uh Mr. Mass, if I could just do a couple of preliminary administrative things. So is there anyone here who had any questions or comments or concerns regarding the sufficiency of their notice they received? Okay, don't see any and um sometimes saying, I can actually legitimately say the acting board secretary and I reviewed this. Found anything to be in order, so it would be my humble opinion that we have jurisdiction to proceed to that. And what we're going to do is we're going to mark into the record what we as a board have before us. So A one is the application package. A two is the amended major site plan and subdivision prepared by French and Corillo Associates dated April nineteenth, two thousand seventeen. Last revised September fifteenth, two thousand twenty two, and that's nineteen sheets. A three is the preliminary and final major subdivision prepared by French and Perlo dated in February ninth, two thousand eighteen, last revised separate, sorry, September nineteenth, two thousand twenty two, consisting of two sheets. A four to the architectural plan prepared by Thomas Brennan Architects dated January twentieth, two thousand twenty three, consisting of six sheets. A five is the green development checklist, undated. A six is the intent to proceed uh dated November ninth, two thousand twenty two. A seven is an email from the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs dated March first, two thousand twenty three regarding RSIS interpretation. Um and A eight is the traffic impact letter prepared by French and Corillo dated February sixth, two thousand twenty three. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to mark as A nine. You'll recall, we previously approved the application. It was a bifurcated application, so we have a resolution for the use variance portion and a resolution for the site plan. So we're going to mark as A nine that resolution of prior approval for the youth variance and that was dated on or about January fifteenth, two thousand seventeen. And A ten is the resolution authorizing the site plan and bulk variance of approval dated on or about September seventh, two thousand seventeen. A eleven is the T and M associates review memorandum prepared uh dated April seventeenth, two thousand twenty three. And speaking of T and M, why don't we swear in Ed Herman, our board engineer, and we'll also swear in Shawna, our uh who's a professional planner and director of planning and zoning. Uh, Ed and Shawna, if you do swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide to the extensionary providing would be the truth, the best you know to help you guide.
I do.
Okay. And that having been said, we'll turn it over to uh Mr. McKenna. Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, um. Please speak up.
I'm sorry, I just interrupted my witness a bit. Not the bit I should. Um and uh. And you on the board have been here. The prior application and for those of you that haven't. Um essentially, this uh project received approval for sixteen units. Um we made some changes to the site plan and uh the subdivision and I'd like to highlight the changes from what was previously approved by the board. Um first and foremost, the number of units. The uh former project was approved for sixteen units. Um the uh the owner has decided to reduce the number of units by two. So that it's now fourteen units. In doing so, what it allowed the um the project to do was to take the twenty eight feet. Because all the units before was fourteen feet wide. And make the remaining fourteen units two feet wide. Which provides a much more, a much better interior plan as far as living space was concerned. Um also, you could fit two cars in the garage, so all the parking for the site, these units will be in the interior of the garage. Um the lot ownership is going to be different also. Before it was a condo project with one big lot. Instead, it's going to be fee simple so that everybody will own their own lot. Um it's really just kind of a technical uh difference. But it's a better form of ownership as far as financing with the banks and so on, so that's the way we're pursuing along those lines. Um there is, there was not before and there is not now any parking variance required and as um. As pointed out by counsel, there's, there's previous this, the uh these strengths that's already been proved. Um he's not going to, it's three witnesses, it's not going to be a thorough room. Um I'm going to testify for sure, but um one is Thomas Brennan, who's sitting immediately next to me. He's the architect for the new plans that have been submitted. Um and we'll keep Mr. Brennan as recent as possible, but I really wanted the board to hear from him as far as the changes in the interior units. And then for him to be available to uh answer any questions that the board have in that regard. Um the second witness is um Andrew French from French and Corillo. Um I believe his testimony is going to, to the board is going to be that the building is exactly the same. The ones, it's the same number of feet from one end to the other. Um it's the same height. There's no um change in setback variances and things such as that. Except maybe a little tweak with thirty two here and there. Other than that, it is essentially exactly what you approved before. In addition to that, if the board recalls it for those who need to order it, for those that aren't. Um the affordable housing for this project is actually provided. In two cottages that are separated from the fourteen units. Those cottages are located in what I call the garden area. And the board approved this last time, there's a beautiful area in front of these units. Um that going all the way to the avenue. It's very deep and it's going to be very well landscaped and the cottage is going to be located with. Uh garden area. Who opened that in the news? Uh from Mr. General testifies to those who were. Very well conceived plan that the board sought before and approved it. And we like to hope that the board thinks that the plan we announced really isn't different, except that the uh the change that we've made. Uh so with that in mind, I'd like to uh call Mr. Brennan.
Sure.
Mr. We can, I go, I got one question.
Sure.
Uh is the parking for the affordable or not?
Yeah, um. Yes.
Where is it, Ben?
Yeah, where, where we got the. Not, I don't know that, yeah.
Paul's here, I did. You don't mind us putting you in right now.
Okay, and you know what? Can I just say? Before we get people things, just for the record, can you identify the principles of your entity? Mr. McKenna, would you, just for the record, uh before we get, would you mind with identifying the principles of your entity so we can do an internal conflict check?
Of the owner, the owner is uh ready to wrap up that much.
Okay, and that's the only principle, so.
That's right.
Now that any uh, so we're okay with that. And then Mr. McKenna, I did, I think at the very beginning of the meeting, you handed this out. Am I supposed to mark this into the record?
Yes, please.
So this will be A twelve and A twelve. Is, I guess these are architectural elevations.
That's right.
Drawings prepared by.
By Thomas Brennan.
Thomas Brennan, ooh, and that's small print that's dated. No, four eleven, two thousand twenty three, and that's consisting of, it looks like two. Three, four, five. Six. Great, so now uh we'll swear you in. If you could just state your name for the record and business address.
Uh yeah, Andrew French, French and Corillo, eighteen hundred thirty four, Long Island.
And your testifying tonight in your capacity as?
Uh, site engineer.
Okay, do you, if you could just raise your right hand, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the best you know to help you guide?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Grab one of those mics. Grab one of those mics.
I just.
Nope.
Put a record in for a handheld, please.
Okay.
Speak into it.
Yeah, you gotta speak in.
Okay.
No problem.
Here we go.
So the question was, is there a pardon for the affordable units? And yes. Uh, the ordinance requires these are two bedroom cottages. They refer one point five parking spaces per unit. So we have two parking spaces for each unit. So up on the uh Clay Street on north side of the townhouse building, there would be two parking spaces here on Clay Street that will be designated for the cottage that's located at the Harding and Hudson Avenue's uh location. And the other uh parking for the cottage on the northeast side will be, there's a driveway with two parking spaces right adjacent to it. These are exactly the two parking spots for each unit that was approved under the original application.
And just for the record, what you're referring to, is that um been marked or do we need to mark that?
Uh, we should mark it. This is a colored landscape plan.
So we're going to say illustrated landscape plan prepared by.
French and Corillo.
And is there a date on that?
Uh, it has a date for nineteen twenty seventeen revised uh January eighteenth, twenty twenty three.
Thank you. So if you could just write A thirteen on that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. You can proceed with. Your next uh witness.
Okay. Uh, we can try to make that.
We'll start them in. If you could just state your name and uh business address, Mr. Brennan?
Yes, good.
Yeah, my name is Thomas Brennan from Thomas Brennan Arm, Exxon, it's one of the architectural firms. And um.
You could just raise your right hand. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the best you know to help you guide?
Yes.
And you are testifying in your capacity as a licensed architect?
Yes.
Yeah, Steve.
Did you want any uh same name?
Yeah, why not? For the record.
Okay.
Yeah, for the record, um I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey for over thirty five years. I'm also licensed in a couple other states uh joining. Uh, I have a master degree in architecture from New York Institute of Technology. And I've been practicing, I guess that's over thirty five years.
Thank you. And just as beside you and you testified, it's on menu. So Mr. Brennan, you were detained by the uh property owners, particular instance, to amend the uh. Plans for the structure in this particular, is that correct?
That. Yeah, that is correct.
So I should like to. Yeah.
And do we need to uh mark that in to the record or is that already marked?
No, it's not marked.
All right, so that'll be A fourteen, oh, is that, is that what we just marked as um A twelve, Mr. McKenna?
No, A twelve.
No? Okay.
No.
I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, so it is already marked, A twelve, thank you. No, it's uh, we already have, we have a smaller version of that, so it's marked, thank you.
Um so this. Uh, good, yes, motion. No, that's right. I was going to say, so just take us through what you did as far as the uh the units that have been previously approved and. The crawl of the two units, the winding. But very briefly.
Okay, yeah, um again, I want to show the elevation first, the perspective of it. Because I think it's very attractive and it, it has a lot of character and residential flavor to it, which I feel would fit in um. Braiding in the red back area, um but I wanted to start there to show you. That, and I'll come back to it later on. Um as we look at the. Um as we look at this thing here, um. This particular exhibit here shows the four floor plans, um the first floor, second floor, third floor, fourth floor, I'd like to point to them. On the first floor is a two car garage. It's a painted garage. And it has uh an elevator, an octal elevator, it has a rear door and it has furnace and utilities here in front. And here's the entrance already regarding then on the site plan. So that's in the front. You come in, you walk up a set of stairs. And as you get to the top of the stairs, you have one large room, which is some fifty one feet long. It has a kitchen in the back. It has a dining in the middle and living room out front. Um and that is going to be quite exquisite, even though it's, it's, you know, fifteen eight or sixteen foot wide. Uh but it is wider than what was there before. Um as you go from here and you go to the next level up, that's the sleeping area. You have the master bedroom in the front with closet space. And a nice bathroom area here in the rear. You have another bedroom area here with closets and another bathroom. And then as you go up to the upper level, you come and there's a loft up on the upper floor with a terrace out front, which obviously you're going to have some. Great views looking down off of that private cover. And then there's also a room in the back, which is, you know, a three bedroom or a flat room, whatever, however, it needs to be um. Um used in in today's marketplace. Um so those are the four floor plans and uh. And if I can. Maybe switch to us. There's, the only variation is the. In the middle of the unit's got two foot bigger in the front, but um. That's shown on the site plan only. I mean, I mean, what was the, what was the other one?
Yeah.
That two of them? The four of them. I think the cottage. Yeah, I have a record, but there was four left on it too. It's in your, it's in your package, though. If you look in your package, you'll see the floor plan for the. On.
That's the last page.
It's on sheet D six.
There you go.
Noted in sheet six.
Yep.
And um as you follow along, the affordable unit, as you walk in, it has a diner in the kitchen, a living room. Again, these are affordable units, so they're a little bit. Um you have a bathroom on the first floor, you go up the stairs. And then you have um two bedrooms and share baths up there with a washer dryer. And again, it's um, it's done in a cottage style, so it matches the same architecture as the larger building that we have, so. Um so anyway, that's the, the small cottage building that you got out front. And if I can, we'll go back. We go back to this one, but this theater is more. Like I was saying, the, the elevation character had the brick. Um that theater and it had the windows, a lot of glass. It'll be very light and airy. Some of the units will have sliding doors, which are nice, those sliders, which will add a lot of. Light in into the unit itself. Um there's a combination of, of. Um, there's a combination of, of hardy plant siding. In the middle here, there's also on the end, it's very light, but there's what they call a hardy plank, plank. Which is um, an individual plank. Just maybe I'll show better. This one's a little bit darker, but you can see here, it's like a, a, a solid member. And it has vertical members, it's broken up. So between the lap siding here. And the uh board and bathroom up top. And on the ends of the building are the hardy plants per se.
Just give me for one second, um, so we kind of, do we need to mark that? Or is that already submitted?
That's.
Then they're got it. Thank you.
Um, so, so primarily that's the elevation character, a little upscale material. Um, you know, rear party plant, metal roofs, metal railings. Um, you know. Anderson windows, a better quality window. Everything is, is um, an upscale type material. That will render a uh, a nice appearance and look when it's all complete.
Brennan, last somebody wanted to ask him some questions.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public for this witness? Want to open a squishy name or?
And if you don't mind, we'll swear you in, and if you can speak into a mic or something. Please, what's your name and address?
Uh, Johnny Dell. Twenty eight Hudson Avenue.
And how you say your last name?
E D E L A.
Alright, good evening and thank you for attending tonight's meeting. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide, and it will be the truth, the best you know, to help you got?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, I don't know if this is pertaining to this gentleman. I'm not savvy on what you people do here. But I don't know if you've really ever drove past and seen the size of that lot. And there's an awful lot of stuff going on that lot, and you're, you're right up against the church. Uh, Red Bank Catholic, and you're right up against a regional school. And you're on a very busy street, so I'm just, what, what my worries are. Uh, I know that they're talking, they talked about uh. Doing away with some parking, but they're gonna uh put parking in for uh each individual unit. Well, you could take the, you could take the garage right out of the picture, because we all know that we turn that into storage. So I live on that street. If you got that many units. Um, and where are they gonna park? Why are they taking, why is the one parking area that was designated? In the past, now gone, and now it's saying that it's all gonna just be with uh. Uh, with each individual unit.
Okay, so that's your, your question is about parking. Um, Mr. McKenna, you have, will you be able to answer that?
Didn't answer it.
Okay.
Uh, I mean, this gentleman's entitled to his own opinion.
Mike.
This gentleman may have an opinion as to parking. The Mr. Brennan has testified that in this particular case, each unit will have self-contained parking.
How many, how many spots?
Three, what did you? Three.
There'll, there'll be three parking spaces per unit on the side.
Okay.
For the main building.
Okay, so three units, is, is one of them the garage?
Two of them are the garage, yes.
Okay, two of them's the garage. Okay, well, when they load up the garage, where are they gonna park?
First of all, sir, that was, I'm not uh pretending to show you any disrespect. You obviously have a look at the plan. The car space does take up the entire garage. There is additional space. However, you have room for two cars as well as some storage in the garage. That's number one. And two, I understand what your concerns are.
Add the mic, stop picking.
I understand what your concerns are, but Brennan has testified, we're gonna have two. Uh, parking pain within the unit. They'll have one additional unit, so parking for three hours. Um, and in addition to that, we have internal space in the garage area for storage if you choose to.
Okay, the, the other concern that I had is. If you have fourteen units and two cottages. Uh. Don't you think that's an awful lot right in that, in that corner? I mean, I mean, there's a lot going on on that corner. Uh, you're gonna have a lot, a lot more traffic coming up and down Clay Street. You have a lot more traffic coming up and down. Hudson, they're not wide streets.
Sir, this is an amended application. This was already approved for sixteen.
I'm, I'm doing, I'm doing what somebody can.
I understand, but what I'm saying is, it's an amended application, which is what has always, has already heard. Testimony and approved sixteen units. This application is to reduce the number, to reduce the traffic. And what you're doing is, you're arguing, being argumentative. When what we're doing is, we're actually modifying and reducing the size. If you have an opinion, sir, there's a time and a place.
Yeah, sir, this, this is just questions for this witness at that point. Sorry, you don't have, you don't have, no, you don't have time. We, we had a time at the end of the meeting for comments from anybody in the audience, so. You know, if you, if you have a question for this witness.
I didn't really, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
No, you know, waste some time. You, you don't know the process. That's what we're trying to explain to you. But this is questions for this witness. You have comments? We have a comment section at the end of, at the end of this meeting, so we'll give everybody opportunity to make their comments at that point.
Alright.
Uh, thank you. Okay, anybody else from the audience have a question for this witness?
Good evening, if you could just state your name and address?
Sure. My name's Kathy Paul. I live at nineteen Ellen Place.
Okay, good evening and thank you for attending. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide, and it will be the truth, the best you know, to help you got?
Yes.
And just so I have the record straight, um, Kathy with the C or K?
K, Kathy.
Got it, thank you.
Uh, my question has to do with the remediation of the uh long time ago. Gas station. We've watched for years them trying to do the remediation. I noticed that the monitoring wells are still in the ground on Harding Road. When we had to do our remediation, we couldn't get a no further action letter until the monitoring wells were removed. So my question is, what is the status of the remediation on this property?
Um, and you do have, that's something that's gonna be able to address.
Thanks.
Oh, thank you. Brennan, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Um, not really. Um, it's just that, as, as it was mentioned, since your units are wider. There's more storage area in the garage space, so. The, that was one of the benefits of making the units wider, is that everything gets more marketable, so.
And, and how, how big is the uh outside parking space? Is it uh outside a garage? Is it just a standard?
Yeah, it's a, it's a standard twenty foot depth, I'm assuming that. Normal driveway, maybe those outside.
Yeah, so the parking spaces in front of the townhouse is actually eleven feet wide, twenty feet deep, so it's larger than your normal nine by eighteen. Okay.
Great, thank you. Okay, any other questions from the public before I. Excuse this witness. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Um, the next witness will be Andrew French from French and Burrell, the site engineer.
Record, he was previously sworn.
Well, thank you, um, would you, uh, you could maintain my yard, this particular place, compared to trying to grant both subdivisions with property and. I believe that, uh, I know this, the data showed before the tour, like, would you at least strive to the board?
I don't have this.
Maybe, uh, the, the gentleman just said, and sites, and how the site, you know. The section of the changes, the, the spacing of the units. Um, on the flash, what is on the title?
Yes, absolutely. So, yeah, I was the site engineer. My office did prepare the original site plan that was in front of the board that was approved. Uh, I did her testimony tonight. Uh, you know, we're here for amended site plan and subdivision approval. Um, the main difference between prior approval and this approval has been indicated. Is the townhouse building went from sixteen units to fourteen units. But the size of the building, the depth and the length stayed the same. Where it's located on the site, still situated, uh, you know, on the west side, uh, on Clay Street, is the same. Uh, the two cottages, the two bedroom affordable units, their location, the same, same as the prior approval. So. From a site plan perspective, this plan is, is generally consistent with, with the previous approval. Except for the units became less, the density got reduced, the parking requirement became less, but we're still providing. The parking in accordance with your ordinance and, and above that requirement. Um, as far as the, the landscaping, there was considerable time went into the design of this site. So that, you know, we had this lush open landscape garden that fronts onto Hudson Avenue. Um, we have concrete pavers, there's uh deciduous trees, uh evergreen trees, shrubs, ornamental grasses, perennials. All the landscaping that was on that original approval is still on these plans, same quantities, same species plantings are the same. Uh, same thing with the lighting. There was LED lighting, decorative fixtures that were part of the original application there on this planet. The same decorative fixtures, fifteen foot high, there's a couple halls that are in the garden area. Uh, there's also decorative fixtures that are on the garage in the, on Clay Street, still those same decorative LED fixtures. There's some recessed lighting that's on the porches that uh face out to the garden space. Those are same recess fixtures that were on the original application. Uh, so this is consistent with that plan. Again, with the only change is that units went from sixteen to fourteen. All the other zoning standards, the setbacks, the distances are consistent with that prior approval.
Uh, cause Mr. McKenna, in his opening statement, said there might be some slight setback changes. Are they exactly the same as was approved, or are there changes?
So I'm just going to, you know, so um, looking at T and M Associates. Letter, and I'll go through a couple and just see you have a slate about what I'm talking about. So um, the original density that was approved uh was nineteen point nine dwellings per acre. Uh, we're providing seventeen point five, we're reducing it. Um, the uh front yard setbacks, um, previously, we had a variance that granted fourteen foot up frontage. So e- each of the townhouse units were fourteen foot wide. And the, they were fee simple at that point in time, and there was subdivision line down. So now they're sixteen foot wide. So that frontage went from fourteen to sixteen, it increased. Um, so the, there was a, a, a front yard setback on Harding of seven point seven two feet. Uh, now we have a front yard setback of seven point six eight feet, so there's a, a de minimis change. Um, so that's actually, yeah, so the original one was seven point six eight feet, now we have seven point seven two. So we've increased that. It was a prior variance, but we have a, a greater depth than originally. Um, same thing with the open space. There was a, a minimum occupied open space at ten percent required. So they vary on each of the lots, but um, you know, the prior approval had a, a minimum of four point oh eight percent. Now our minimum is five point four eight percent, so we've increased that open space when we reconfigured the lots.
And maybe I can help you out. I, I should have said this, I apologize to the board. Things have only gotten better. I say they're.
Yes.
The, the setbacks, so, so, and this changes, they're, 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 they're for the better. So perhaps we gain two feet here, gain a foot there. That's why I wanna, I didn't wanna miss it, I said, it's exactly the same. Because when we took out the units, um, and made them uh bigger, we actually made the setbacks better. So I apologize, I probably should have.
It's okay.
I, I just wanna clear, clear it up.
And then sure, right. So in essence, I just wanted to go through a couple so you understood the flavor, really. We're, we're not asking for additional variance relief, we're improving the variance relief to this priority.
I, I, I do have uh two things I wanna ask you. One of them was the shade tree commission asked us to increase the calories. Uh, previous that were planted, um, uh, two point five to three point five, and we had agreed to do that, correct?
That is correct, yes.
And then the second was a, a request from the environmental commission. And what they indicated was that they wanted to see um mitigation of the runoff. Um, yeah, if, uh, any main type infrastructure, and we addressed that also.
Well, yes, I, I, you know, I could explain the process. So this plan, again, from the prior approval, the square water management is consistent. With the original application. This project is less than an acre of disturbance, less than a quarter acre of new impervious. It's not considered a major development. Um, you know, when you look at green infrastructure, uh, you know, the idea is to improve things, you know, that's the goal. Uh, you know, this site had a gas station on there. It had some remediation that needed to be cleaned up. You know, there was a lot more motor vehicle surface area on the property under the prior condition. So on this application, what we've done is, we've minimized the motor vehicle surface. We've cleaned up the, the soils from the gas station. Uh, and, you know, the motor vehicle surface was eighty seven hundred square feet under the old original development. Now we're at thirty seven hundred square feet, so we reduced the motor vehicle surface area. So even in the eyes of DP, if this is a major development, what are quality, wouldn't it be required? Because we're improving, we're reducing that motor vehicle surface area. When we say green infrastructure, what we're doing is creating this lush open space here. Uh, so we're, we're taking the, the site, and most of it then is clean runoffs. Roof areas, landscaping, lawn areas, sidewalks are all considered clean runoff. So we're certainly improving it, uh, from a green infrastructure standpoint. Uh, we have concrete pavers that are along the garden space as the walkway, so. Concrete pavers, as you know, has the uh joints in there, and they allow the water to run back into the ground too, so that's considered a green infrastructure. So we feel we're meeting the intent, even though it's not required for this application.
And, um, Andrew, I don't know if we have the answer to this, but um. Then we'll say, I, she asked a question about the status uh of the.
Yes, so uh, my office is not the LSRP of record on this site, but. We have some history and understand what the gas station remediation work. So the soils uh from the gas station have been remediated and cleaned up. They're in the process of finalizing that remedial action outcome report and documenting that with the EP. Uh, the groundwater is still continuing to be monitored and looking to get that closed out in the near future, but that's still ongoing. Uh, work on the groundwater for the wells.
So, uh, to summarize, to get your RAO from the. Uh, Department of Environmental Protection, suggested that.
Just about there on the soils. I mean, that's right, we file on any day. The, the work has been completed, it's my understanding, it's a matter of the paperwork. On the groundwater, there's still a little more uh work to be done, uh, but. The applicant has pledged that they are going to see that through and get that uh to the DEP remedial action outcome uh process.
To, to simplify, basically, your shovels aren't hitting the ground until everything's completed and signed off, correct?
Uh, well, the soil conditions have been remediated, so on the site, the soils have been taken care of. It's just the groundwater that has to be done, and the intent of that is, that could be a process that takes some time. So that might not stop the construction, but ultimately, the applicant is agreeing to make sure to seize that through and get some remedial action outcome completed.
Yeah, I, 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 I can address that, sure. Uh, cause I, I have a project right now. Uh, once you get the RAO, the remedial action. Um, order, you, you can go ahead and proceed on construction for that site. But they may require monitor, monitoring wells to be, to, to continue. But they may require monitoring monitoring wells to be to to continue to check the the ground. If anything arises during that period of time, you'll get a notice with the D P, they'll tell you what you need to do. Um, but usually that is groundwater off site. They will not give you an R R A O to go ahead and build uh unless they deem that the soils are of adequate and and clean status. That that and believe me, it's a very heavy burden to reach with D P for years. Um, they will not allow you to get an R A O. It used to be called uh a different name and pronounced book and R A O. Unless they're satisfied that that property is proper.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Not definitively, I'd say approximately ten to ten years.
Ten years?
Approximately. I don't know that definitively. I know, when we were here in front of this board, I think we have our approval from twenty eighteen, so that's so it started before then, so that's what I'm saying, approximately.
Who would know that? The size of D P.
Uh.
What would your team would know that?
I think.
How long?
You know, why don't we just swear you in if we don't, and I'm sorry, we didn't hear. And Sharon, I don't think the um, I think it was an important question, just ask it again, so that it might.
Mike.
Mike.
Uh, the question was, how long have the wells been installed, who on your team would know that?
So I could I could respond to that.
Uh, we need to swear you in if you could just state your name and add address, please.
Uh, my name is Roger Longford, ninety four Church Street, Little Silver.
All right, good evening and welcome. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the best you know, so help you God?
I do.
And just for the record, your affiliation with the application is?
Um, I'm a a partner in the project.
Thank you.
So um the several years ago, the board approved Fortune Square, it's the same issue. Um, these wells have been in the ground, I believe, eight years. And what happens with deeper groundwater is there's no fate intrusion issues or anything like that. But the process is called natural attenuation. That whole area of Red Bank, if you go across the road to the parking lot and other areas um had elevated levels of certain contaminants. Those levels have dropped tremendously over the last eight years, in fact, the numbers were pretty high at Fortune Square. We built the project and only uh uh within the last year um was the uh the world levels that were monitored below uh standard. Um, so as you know, as a result of that, the paperwork with D P was kind of but in New Jersey, this has really become a regular thing. The good news is, especially with Red Bank soils that are really granular, um the contamination migrates and generally um uh it's it, you know, it's called natural attenuation.
Well, how what requirements were you to do for Fortune Square since you don't really have a recommendation on this one?
No, well, the requirement was really just to monitor the water, it's the same thing, the soils that were contaminated, a great expense were removed and sent to a processing facility and replaced with certified clean fill. The water, however, is a different issue. Um, and as I said to you, what D P wants to see is a trend that over time, the contamination is consistently being reduced. It dissipates, it's really pretty amazing and tremendously in Fortune Square, and these are the same basic soil types. And as I said, no threat to neighbors or or residents.
That's just to so if I understand it correctly. I mean, basically, Red Bank carries a bunch of little called streams underneath. And the water doesn't just sit in the ground beneath that piece of property all the time, is that correct? I mean it.
Well, that's correct, it's no different from.
It sort of runs through its uh
It's it's the water table.
Uh, uh, its own filter, the land's filter, is that kind of what you're?
I that's a fair characteristic of what goes on.
Thank you.
Close, but not quite. So so I'll add in just a little context, um the state of New Jersey entrusted what they call L S R Ps licensed site remediation professionals. It used to be that D P would uh manage the process on these sites. It came to the realization that they just didn't have the staffing to go all over the state to to do this work. Uh, so they adopted a program that licenses these site remediation professionals and the manual on site remediation is probably thicker than your phone book and it's very detailed. So to become that, you effectively as an L S R P become an agent of D P and you're acting under your own licensure, but you're acting on behalf of N J D E P. The testimony that we've heard throughout the process here is the current application team is not the designated L S R P, it's still uh correctly if I'm wrong, Mr. McKenna, it's still under someone else's authority.
Yes.
Yeah, so a prior owner or whatever. So it's not atypical for the groundwater things to go on for an extended period of time. Uh, it doesn't really represent a problem, like I said, the trend that they're looking for is to see that the levels of contamination in the groundwater are naturally reducing over time, which is what you would expect absent any other uh causes or point source pollution that would change that, that's really what they're looking for, to make sure everything is on the way to getting better. And then there's, at some point, the expectation would be that the levels would get reduced naturally below uh what their chart says is the acceptable levels, and then at that point, they would be eligible to be considered for the response action outcome, which is the closeout of that uh process.
I just, I might be a little confused from it, but I I live on Hudson Avenue, so I see this property all the time. If in you're still in a process that you can't build yet, you're still going to be waiting, is there in sight like when you can build?
The um, there there there's nothing from an environmental perspective that would prevent us from building, uh should a approval be granted.
Okay, that's what I'm.
And just further characterizing this, the statement was made that the soils were also uh contaminated. Previously, those soils have been fully remediated and they're in the final process of getting a sign off saying the dirt is now clean. It's just the lingering issue of the groundwater typically is a long term monitoring uh in most cases. It could be, you know, five, ten, fifteen years in some cases.
Yeah, so one just one just got signed off on smart groundwater after eleven years. And the other one got signed off after.
Hey, and one question. I've got one question. Um, the landscaping design on this application is wonderful. Um, but as you've moved from a condo association to a simple fee, who's going to be responsible for the upkeep?
Home owners, homeowners association. It's very similar. The difference is, instead of having a condo association, you have an association.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, any other questions for the next one on the board? Any question from the public for this witness? They were closed up, oh, come on up. Question.
Yes.
And just state your name for the record again.
Johnny Dell.
Thank you, you're previously sworn, thank you.
Okay, the the only thing that is confusing me is that they're saying that everything is the same size. Uh, but you have a bunch of variances here that are going from thirty five foot to sixteen foot. So uh if everything's the same size, why do we have to have these variances?
Okay.
Yeah, so I believe, uh, I'm sure, but I think he has the public notice. And what the one he just referred to was the lot frontage of thirty five feet uh where we have sixteen feet, but that variance was granted before for fourteen feet. So we're just acknowledging that we're seeking that relief, even though actually we're making that better than it was before when it really was granted. Makes sense?
Yeah. Uh, Liz, I apologize, I said before, I don't want to come off as like some rumpy old man. I I really feel like a cat in a dog pound. But uh I have to, because I live on this street, I have to at least address what's bothering, that's all. Uh, the and the only thing that I still that that I just can't uh get over is if you had okay, for like people coming to visit these people in these fourteen units, if you guys had a designated area for parking, why is it gone? I mean, just just for uh for people coming to visit these people. You know, I mean, I'm I'm just saying, it's a congested area, if it was, you know, if I was living in somewhere in hell, I really wouldn't get across it because I would be a mile away from my neighbor, but uh, you know.
And Mr. Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Good question, so let's ask the engineer. Uh, his impression is that there was a prior designated parking area and now he's concerned that that parking area is gone, can you address that?
Yeah, I mean, the intent is that, you know, the R S I S and the ordinance from Red Bank, the park requirements for a residential unit anticipates visitors as part of those calculations. So these, the parking requirement of two point five anticipates that includes parking for this visitors and guests. So instead of the two point five, we're providing three for each of the units, so we're we're providing more parking as required. So.
As a part of the. Yes. That's it.
Yeah, so the parking configuration, the way it's situated here, this has always been the parking area, same thing with the cottage, two spots, just as we're showing on here.
Okay. All right.
And by the way, never never feel ashamed to come up and ask questions, that's what it's all about.
Okay, any other questions from the public? Okay, we'll close this public portion for him.
Thank you.
And now, uh, who's chair members of the board? Uh, we brought our professor professional planner this evening. Uh, Michael Simpson is prepared to testify as to the positive and negative criteria. Um, Mr. Kennedy and I had a discussion before the meeting and the board ruled on that previously, this isn't a method application. Um, I don't believe that it 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 necessary to present that testimony. But we asked Mr. Simpson to appear tonight and to prepare for it, in case any of the board members wanted to hear it, in case you had any questions.
Okay. I I personally don't think it's required, nothing's changed, uh, I don't know, I can't speak for everyone up here, but.
Well, it's gotten less intense, I mean. Variances are.
So the 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 intensity is somewhat less and there are no new variances.
No, well, and any, they're very.
They're continuing, yeah, right. But there's there's nothing added to that would require a new variance.
That's right.
And you're not exacerbating any previously granted variance.
That's right. Who 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 would address the uh list from our engineer? Uh, I look, Mr. French, I've read most of it, but I mean, if you want, I'll flop a letter and go through the whole thing. And it's it's anything you feel we need to address. Oh, I I did want to address my error that uh Mr. Herman raised in his letter. And that was um trash. And uh more than as we testified before, will be private trash.
It's just remind me, I remember it was years ago, we've changed so much this thing, but the trash will be in the garage and taken out by the homeowner, right?
Right.
Thank you.
In the in the back, on that side.
Only affordable strategy. So they don't have a garage.
Yeah, the cottage.
So I think uh I think that's a good question. And I think.
I'm sorry, just repeat the question, something you haven't.
The question was, um, with regard to private trash walling, where will the affordable units um keep the what will be supplied by our company, you know, the affordable thing?
Well, that's off the fact that the other units will be in the garage, and the affordable don't have a garage, so where would they be?
Yeah, I I would propose that at the rear of the cottages, we will in supply to uh Mr. Herman a detail of a small area that would surround that would have a tough and 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 we 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 would fabricate it with opening doors so that it would not, you know, blend the architecture, that's really what we would have to do. Because certainly, I'm not interested in seeing any trash or recycling that would be visible to uh to any of these homeowners.
And this is all common area.
Yes.
Yes, that's right.
So basically a small enclosure.
Yes, we do something that is.
Not just leaving a garbage can on the side of your house.
No, that that's that's exactly correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Kennedy, I I would um ask that you bet in this condition of approval?
Got it, thank you.
That way you know it's going to be built.
I have another question, uh, how far, I mean, I don't believe I was here when this was voted on. I want to check that before we do the vote today. Uh, that's the expectation. How far out is the property line though on the affordable units? Because it's each unit's, why you have it some kind of, that's understandable with the for reading. Yeah, it was, it's like where it goes.
Property.
Okay, so this is only the portable lot, and you have the common area walking through the parking lot?
And also through the market.
This is all cross access.
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying to see, okay, this is their private lot, they'll purchase this part.
Yes.
Okay, even as a portable unit, that line marked exit.
This is their lot right here.
And the common walking path walks through their yards.
It's all common, but it walks through the fourteen market rate and the two affordables are for effectively granting easement for common maintenance for all this, you know, the brick pavers and the landscape.
Yeah, I can I can see that with the the market rating, I'm a little bit, I'm sorry, I'm late to the party on this. Um, I what I can, what I see is somebody walking their dog here, who is responsible for this? Okay, you have common area, but this is technically private property.
Well, so is all of this.
All this, okay.
Everything is.
Yeah. Well, not this one, not this lot. This this lot is here.
Right, but this lot is right here and this lot is right here.
Each unit has their own.
So so in every, right, in every single case, there's going to be an easement from that particularly property owner that allows for the common enjoyment of the space, there's also going to be a significant edge all the way around. The bottom line is, we've never seen so many dogs in 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 housing today, it's unbelievable. And the homeowner documents, um, you know, that relate to what you can and can't do, I'm pretty strict in that regard.
Right.
And I will and I will tell you that nobody's happy about seeing burned brass and all that other stuff, that's going to be true for all sixteen homeowners here.
Okay.
This is kind of, were there any issues with? This is kind of. I mean, this is our ones.
Do it as a compliment.
No, actually. We were um very happy with this letter and um, there was one other issue that he raised, that he should answer about the cost easements. And I can read that question later, like um, it was on the plan and we are providing cost easements.
Yeah, but Chairman, uh, I concur, the uh the review was somewhat truncated only because there weren't significant changes to the previous approval uh in the interest of just kind of highlighting those things, that's that was the purpose of this review letter. Uh, the other commentary had been previously addressed through the prior approval process. Uh, so what you see on here is sort of a condensed version with just the information that was needed for this to properly be able to review the amendment to this application.
It's a it's a rare case, we get an applicant come to us and actually. It's, it's a rare case. We get an applicant come to us and actually reduce. Large setbacks and, and better a. That's what I see here. If my question is seriously, if approved, when would you think a shovel would hit the ground?
Well, assuming we had a resolution.
Speaking to the mic.
I'm saying, assuming you pass.
Right.
I mean, this has been a long time. We've been looking at this and, and I know Ray, you've been through hoops, but I'm just curious.
To answer your question, assuming the board were to, uh, act favorably on the application. Assuming further that there's about a thirty, you know, thirty days for a resolution. Then there's going to be the component resolution compliance with, I believe, Mr. Herman and others. I think that can be handled efficiently. So I, my best estimate would be, uh, we would break ground in August. Or September, it seems like a long time, but.
Not really.
Things done in this business, not easy.
I agree.
By the way, and when we start, we start then by the middle of the winter, the building would be upside it. This would happen very fast.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions? In the public? Any comments from the board? Okay, any comments from the public that should change?
Mr.?
Please.
Hi, can we just state your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Lillian Marshall. Lillian with one L and Marshall with two L's on the end. I live at one L place. You can also call my address twenty nine Hudson Avenue. To give you an example of where I sit, by that's down.
And you know, I'm just going to square you in and let, uh, so these were the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide it will be the truth, the best you know, so help you God.
Yes.
Thank you.
So first I have some compliments. And I have some questions and then some concerns. So first I wanted to compliment you, Ray, for partnering with Roger Mumford. For doing a beautiful project and reducing the size. Of the apartments, because when I saw the plans originally. I was concerned at how narrow those apartments were. I thought, you're never going to sell those. It's a good job. And we as neighbors are all excited to see this property get developed. So my concern really has to do, because I sit on Hudson Avenue, is the traffic. So first I need to ask the zoning board, because I'm not very familiar with the zoning board processes. If you're, you have jurisdiction over traffic and what will come with this project. First, my question is about that lone, uh, cottage over on the side. How, if their parking is all the way up in the corner. And they come in with a big hall from Costco or Shopper's. They've got to walk all the way around. To get to their cottage. Most likely they're going to park on Hudson Avenue to load up when they have big halls. So my big concern is, as you know, on Hudson Avenue, it narrows down right next to where my home is. And there is currently parking on the street. But Hudson Avenue at that point is not wide enough for two-way traffic and parking. It's not narrow and it's too narrow for three lanes of cars, the parked cars and the two lanes. Currently there is parking allowed from twenty-two Hudson all the way up, I think thirty-four Hudson is the last house. Where the parking stops. So I hate to say this, but luckily my neighbor John here has parking on Clay Street. But there are two homes on Hudson that do not have parking in the back that need to park on the street. But I think that if this project goes through. Parking should be eliminated because I have pictures here. To show about what I'm talking about. So if you see.
You know what? Let's just be really official and we'll just mark this into the record. We're going to mark this, we're just going to call it, uh, P one Marshall, P for public and.
And, and then I just want to be clear that we do not have authority over travel in Red Bank. Absolutely none.
When big projects like this come about. So yeah, that's my concern. First of all. The person that is all the way in the corner is going to have to add to that parking chaos that adds to the chaos. I've seen several accidents happen. Because two cars cannot pass each other at the same time, as you surely know, living on Hudson Avenue, coming through. Um, the other thing is I noticed.
You know, I'm sorry, before I forget, this P one, uh, just for the record, what is this a picture of?
That is a picture of Hudson Avenue. Where it narrows down. In front of twenty-six Hudson Avenue.
Okay, and, uh, did you take that picture?
I took that picture.
Okay, and roughly when?
Um, that picture was taken when the first application was made in twenty sixteen.
Okay.
But I could take that picture again and again.
No problem. So I think the important thing is for the record, it was from two thousand sixteen, but you're testifying that it was an accurate depiction of what existed then and what.
And still exists today. And then on Sunday. I witnessed not one, but three cars going the wrong way up Canal Street, which is the further end of, what is this, block fifty-eight?
Um, you mean between Clay Street and, uh, Hudson?
Clay and Hudson going the wrong way up Canal. I caught a picture of one, but that was the third of three. I saw one, two, three go the wrong way. So there's already chaos in the area that needs to be addressed. But my other concern then is during the construction plan, I saw. That right where that oval is, is where trucks will be having their access to do the construction. So my concern is during the construction phase, construction phase. If there is, um, a mitigation plan for that on Hudson Avenue. Because that will create a problem, especially pickup time for Red Bank pathway. Um, which is the heaviest traffic.
So right now on the, on the plan where the entrance for the constructing vehicles is. I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, there's no park in there now on that part of the street, is there? So I'm just, that would, that would stay that way, which should help alleviate that, okay? Oh, I, I'm, I'm aware of narrow, I grew up on Hudson.
Now, Mr. Mumford, can you speak into the microphone so we can pick you up?
See, sorry, so there are any of you. Any of that, and as you correctly summarized. This area is the, you've the red raft stone for, for truck runoff and so forth. So, um, that, that is where it's located, uh, Hudson Avenue. You know, it made more sense to do that than to come up hardening, obviously. And with the setbacks off Clay Street, and I should add, rebuilding Clay Street, you know, as part of this application.
Necessary.
Yeah, it certainly is necessary, right? It's like one big puzzle.
Yeah. No, so my concern, it's only that the chaos that it's going to cause on Hudson Avenue with trucks coming in. Um, being that there's two ways, it's not, uh, wide enough for two-way traffic and through with people parked.
Well, the only thing I would add is it's going to be organized chaos, which is better than regular chaos.
Mr. Chairman, I have a thought. The chairman pointed out something very accurate and I understand that, that this board does not control it. Best thing to do is anything on my petition list is to make an appointment to traffic safety or return of a girl right then. Okay? You can express your concerns to them about the current situation. And in addition to that, you can also address your concerns about what happened during construction. Often times, I'm meeting such a fan, they propagate action on the part of the police department. The grabs, police car out there monitoring, you know, all types of things like that. So they're really the people that you need to talk to because. I mean, you got a great board here, they can't, they can't.
That's all right, I'm sorry. But they can, they do have, so thank you for that about the traffic. And just the one poor soul in the corner who has no parking in front of their house. Or family. Rents up in the corner.
Believe me, they'll be happy people from a beautiful home and a.
You know, just speaking to the mic.
I was going to say. There's going to be about four hundred people that want to live there in a house that's heavily, uh, discounted, way below the house, I assure you.
And they're going to have guaranteed parking. That's those two designated spots are their spots. So they got parking.
Yes, well, the heads.
Or they deliver.
One last fun comment. Fact that you provided part. Space that's like a part, your middle school. Several schools. Expect that many schools and many job owners will want to use that part.
Let me just say. It won't be, it won't be that easy for them. Because when you look at the landscape plan in absolute detail, there will be thick plantings all the way around. Um, and there will be an entrance from Hudson Avenue, but I can assure you. That the type of, uh, you know, residents that are going to live here, all sixteen, are not going to look very favorably. You know, they're having company in the morning, somebody walking by. You know, with a, a, a dog with a sense of direction.
My, those are all my comments. Thank you for the advice, Mr. McKenna, and good luck on the project.
Thank you.
Thank you for the comments. Anybody else have a comment to make at this time? Okay, we're close to public question. Mr. McKenna? Um, wrap it up? Well, no, I just want to thank you for this time, the thing. When I think. On this dependent application. Better application than, um, probably the defenderings, the, uh, your architectural plans, design plan, everything about it's just better. Um, a little less intense, so was a little less traffic. And yet they'll end up with a gorgeous project on property that has been. Send travel. I'm looking forward to it as a Red Bank, because I drive by Hudson Avenue all this time, so. Um, every time I go by that, it's like, what was? I'm hoping that someday, something's going to happen, so. I just, I want to thank the board for its attention and, and having driven your questions and your patients. Mr. Kennedy.
Sure, a couple of things. First up, uh, a good friend, Sharon Lee, had a question. That was an excellent question and it's something I should have addressed earlier. So this is an amended application, but it is a quote unquote, uh, new application for all of us here. So because this was. If you were not here or you voted against the prior approval or you weren't even on the board, I think that is relevant that you, anyone here tonight who listened. And reviewed the application can vote tonight. So I don't think you had to have been here. So that, that's a good question. Um, and it, it's not a continuation. And for the record, I'm assuming Mr. McKenna would agree with that.
That's correct, yes.
And then, uh, Mr. Chairman, I've taken the liberty of writing, um, throughout the hearing process, a bunch of potential conditions of approval. Um, that came up or that I was thinking of. Um, and I can, uh, recite them. If there's an inclination to approve the application and then there's an inclination to tie the application, I don't have to recite the condition. So I, I defer to you.
I would appreciate it if you would, I think, conditions before we do this.
Okay.
Nice face.
Right, we, we can do this. Um, so what we've done, uh, the conditions of potential conditions of approval. That I've thought about were obviously compliance with all the promises, commitments and representations that development team made tonight. And for some of the ladies and gentlemen in the audience who might not be regular attendees, um, one, on behalf of the chairman, welcome and come back. And number two. We put this condition in so in case I don't say it now, if they said it during the hearing, it counts. Uh, compliance with the T and M associates review memorandum and compliance with all the terms and conditions of the prior approvals. Uh, the prior resolutions unless specifically obviated as a result of these changes. Um. And, uh, Ed, quick question. Do we need any EV issues or conditions I have to worry about?
I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you. And then we have to, in terms of Shawna, um. I know the board is very sensitive to affordable housing and I think. And the prior approval and we as a, a borough have, uh, reaffirmed this policy, the applicants need to, uh, if this is approved, they need to submit. An affordable housing plan to the borough's affordable housing team that needs to be reviewed and approved, correct?
That is correct.
Right, and I think that's, um, in the words of the borough's affordable housing attorney, uh, these things usually need to be done sooner rather than later.
Yes.
Okay. And, um. Uh, outside approvals, applicants need to obtain any and all outside approvals. And, uh, we usually have a caveat to that, that if the plans materially change as a result of. Those outside approvals, uh, they need to come back. Um, Ed, in the prior approvals, to be able to type of development agreement or is that just if the borough requires?
I believe it was if the borough required.
Okay. And then, um, obviously perfection of the subdivision and perfection or creation of that association, uh. Uh, documentation in accordance with New Jersey law. And we had a prior approval and I think it was implicitly, um, referenced here. About the, the formal gardens being as beautiful and, and luxurious as they are. Uh, there was a prior condition, uh, Mr. McKenna, that said. That it has to be perpetually maintained and replaced and replanted as necessary. And that's got to be appropriately, uh, memorialized in the association documents. I'm assuming there would not be a problem with that. Okay, and we have, um. Um, come, can, can, continue to, uh, complete the environmental remediation in accordance with prevailing, uh, DEP regulations. And I think in the past, we've had, uh, that you'd be, uh, good enough to keep our, um. Zoning office and board engineer abreast as to developments, particularly upon request. And we're going to have. Now, Shawna, uh, Mr. McKenna had referenced a, um, trade free commission memo and environmental commission memo. I, I didn't mark them into the record, so let's just mark those into the record. What number we have to? Um. I'll just mark them in momentarily. Well, as the next two documents. And then we had, uh. Uh, Ed, I think he suggested that he would comply with those con- conditions that the shade tree commission had and the environmental commission.
Well, let me, let me be clear. Now, on the shade tree commission, um, request, the answer is yes. They asked us to increase the caliber or the size of the trees and, and we, and we went and went, do exactly what they said.
And we'll mark that shade tree commission as B one, okay?
Yeah, that's fine. And then, um, and the other request from the environmental commission, they just said try to mitigate.
The runoff?
The runoff and, um, actually, um, Mr. Um. Uh, well, this, um, girl had already addressed it.
Okay.
The French had already addressed this stuff.
So we'll mark that environmental commission as B two. And, um.
But he, I mean, he even dressed it on the left.
Got it. Uh, compliance with any applicable ADA regulations. And let's see, um. Uh, what about the remediation action order and pursuing that? Any site triangle easements to be maintained? And I think from the last time and Mr. Mumford testified about that. Uh, plans have clay sheet improvement details set forth thereon. And. Let's see, performance and maintenance guarantees if necessary, the association, um. Uh, Mr. White had said, you know, about the landscaping, that was responsible. And I think you had said the association will be responsible and that'll be in those. Those by, those association bylaws, private trash. Uh, Mr. McKenna, I think we typically have, uh, a requirement that more frequent pickup if necessary. Um, and then we have the revision of the plans to include a small, um, landscape, I'm sorry, a small enclosure area. Uh, the details of which will be reviewed and approved by the board engineer, basically where the affordable housing units are going to store their, their garbage. Uh, cross access easements typically to be reviewed and approved by the board engineer and board attorney. And once recorded. Um. Uh, get proof of recording to the, uh, county clerk. And let's see. Uh, compliance with, um, I know Ms. Marshall, you had some questions and just. uh, compliance with, um, I know Ms. Marshall, you had some questions, and just so you know, the borough does have a procedure for construction maintenance and what time things can start and how you have to protect things. So that's a, and a, one of the condition of approval, any approval, that there are, um, rules and timeframes and, and limitations. And also, um, let's see, we also, Mr. McKenna, we have Ms. Marshall's point and Mr. Monford's point of controlled chaos. You coordinate your construction activity with the borough. Whether that's done as part of the developers' agreement, and if you have, uh, these are sometimes police necessary to, to help with the traffic. And dedicated parking for the two affordable housing units. I think that was my, my summary, Mr. Chairman.
Great.
Um, just wanted to add that, um, I know this is something we talked about earlier, Kevin, um, about having time.
Timeframes.
Timeframes on when, um, these things should be completed, especially the, uh, recording the D, uh, the easement access, um, and the subdivision. Um, and construction, which is most important. We, we trust that you are going to follow through this time, but you know.
Okay, so Shawna, if I may, you're looking for construction, I'm sorry, for some type of timeframe for the easements and homeowners association documents to be quote-unquote finalized. And for the subdivision perfection to be completed and for building permits to be issued.
Right.
Mr. McKenna, you've, um.
Received.
Received.
Or applied for it.
Building permits, okay, got it. So, Mr. McKenna, do you have, um, some type of realistic, um, but functional?
Excuse me.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just saying.
I was going to say, not the standing.
With, for all of those various signs combined, we would say by December.
Of this year?
Yes.
It's appreciated and, and ambitious. And so, Mr. Chairman, Mr. McKenna, you, you heard those conditions that I recited as modified. Are they generally acceptable to you?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, and, and if, if, if we have any problems with timeframe for any specific reason that's beyond our control, that I, we would report back to the board, possibly answer the extension.
Got it.
Right now, we've not anticipated.
Okay, anybody like to make a motion to?
I would. Every day, when is this going to be built? So I am very happy to say I would love to see it built yesterday. So.
I'll second that, and I'd like to add, uh, Ms. Marshall and anybody else. If I were you after the meeting, I would talk to Mr. Monford and them, get their phone number if you need. He's got a good track record in my bank. Um, you have problems with the trucks and all that, I'm sure they'll try and remedy it for you. Well, it's all the neighbors. It's everybody. I get it, but I, I, I think you'll find he'll do the best he can to, to keep it to him.
Sounds like there's an open door policy here, so we, we can use that to our advantage.
Go to Mr. Monford's anytime you want to.
My second.
Yeah, so second. Okay. Okay, and Tori?
Yes.
Eileen Holken?
Yes.
Sean Murphy?
Absolutely.
Ray Mas?
Yes.
Sharon Lee?
Yes.
And Vince?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.